I want to ask for the city attorney to make a report on what transpired.
Thank you, Mayor Ledford. The mayor and all city council members were present throughout the full closed session. Item 4.1, Tara Beavers at All versus Urban Santana pending litigation. City Council appies of the status of this matter, there is no further reportable action. Item 4.2, City of Palmdale versus Rodney Bruce, which is pending litigation. The City Council appies of the status of this litigation, there is no further reportable action at this time. Item 4.3, Sally Haid versus City of Palmdale pending litigation. The City Council appies of the status of this litigation, there is no further reportable action at this time. Item 4.4, Annual Performance Evaluation of the City Attorney. Closed session, City Council due to the performance of the city attorney, which he successfully passed. Council agreed to certain changes which must be brought back and have contributed to further reportable action. That concludes the closed session report.
Alright, thank you.
First and foremost, we begin here, thank.
Not a thing.
We're just recording on a closed session, we can't talk about what transpired in a closed session. What he's doing, he's just outlining the issue.
So we can't re-present our work?
Yeah. Alright, thank you. So that's seven items, item, public comments regarding this to our five o'clock. Anybody want to make a comment? Alright, seeing, I want to adjourn the meeting to seven o'clock. So, we'll be back in about four minutes. Start our regular news game. You know, it's like the movie Jaws, when they first see the shark, they say, "We're gonna eat your boat." Got a lot of hopes here tonight, sorry, we don't have chairs for everybody. What I would like to offer up is, we're gonna take care of some business, obviously, upfront. But I would like to actually move our agreement, which is item 10 on our agenda, I'd like to move it over after consent calendar. Way we can take care of that, why a lot of people are here right now, so stay tuned for that. Alright, with that, let's go ahead and call or order our Palmdale City Council. And what we have tonight with us is PAC 692, just gonna come up and do the pledge. So if I can get PAC 692 to come forward. Typically, what we do is we have a pledge of allegiance, so we do a moment of silence after that. So we get all pangs rise.
May the audience please rise. May those on uniforms please place your right hand over your heart. And those not placed, your right hand over your heart. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. Ready, begin.
I am the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If we remain standing, we're gonna do one more silence. Alright, ladies and gentlemen, thank you. And thanks to PAC 692, good job, you guys. Alright, item three on our agenda is roll, please.
Mayor Ledford?
Here.
Mayor Prochim Perio?
Here.
Councilmember Hoffauer?
Here.
Councilmember Betancourt?
Here.
Councilmember Bishop?
Here.
Alright, we're gonna start off, we have our Department of Animal Control this year. We brought, they bring somebody every meeting to introduce to the crowd. And the idea this year is just a promotion of our relationship with our animal shelter. But it's an opportunity for one of you lucky people to maybe adopt Harold. Harold's a squirrel. So we have our volunteer to kind of lead us in this presentation, so welcome.
Welcome, sir. Hi, everybody, my name is Jesse, I'm from Palmdale, I'm a person. And tonight, Harold with me, Harold is a three-year-old Shepherd mix. He came to us as a stray in August. And his shyness has kept him from getting adopted. He's a really sweet dog, we've been working with him since he came up to these acceptable areas. And he is, he's been really well on a leash. Although here, he's very excited, you know, so he can show his willingness and his energy here. But, other than that, he's, he's good on a leash. He knows some basic commands, like sit and fall for a treat. If you got a treat in your hand, he'll do anything for you, Harold. We're trying to get him adopted, hopefully, if he stays with us for another week or so, we'll probably take him down to Awas and Meows. That's our first big event of the year. And see if he'll get home there. But Harold is, they say he's a Shepherd mix, but I'm still trying to find the Shepherd out.
Maybe years.
Yeah, maybe years, but his stance is not Shepherd, I'm sorry. But he's a great dog, he's, you see, he's calming down, you know, and he likes to be outside. He likes to be with people. So, he's available for adoption, he's got his shots, he's got his chip planted, and he's also been adopted. Can't tell you what the price is gonna be, because he's been so long with us, but it's gonna be reasonable. Usually, they run from $9.5 to $150. So, anyway, a little bit about our shelter, we are right down the road, that's here on Highway. We are the first, alright, we're the first indoor shelter that LA County has had in about forty-some-odd years. It's a really nice facility, if you haven't seen it, you should come see it. Maybe find your forever dog there, or cat, or bunny, or hamster, we get all sorts of critters in. And, you know, take one home, take a couple home. But we do a lot of public service, a lot of adoption events to get our animals out and let them, you know, see the public again, and hopefully find their forever home. We just had adoption event in Lancaster at Subaru. Subaru loves pets, event was what it was, and we took about thirty animals, cats and dogs, and we had twenty adoptions that day. So, most of the animals go back to their community, you know, and a lot of them, we don't see them again because they're going to forever home, which is a great thing. I do a lot of cleaning up at the shelter, it's one of my jobs, helping the staff out, taking care of the kennels, making sure that these guys have a nice clean area to live in. And picking up after they tear up their beds, which is not unusual for a lot of these dogs. But it's fun, it's a fun thing to do, I didn't think it would be until I started working here, because I am an animal owner.
Yeah, we can tell.
Thank you.
You're perfect. So I think the point here is, we can, we can volunteer, if you have an interest to volunteer at the animal shelter, it's another way to give back to the community. This is really about how we develop a strong relationship with the, probably the best shelter in the county is probably in Palmdale. It's brand new, and it's beautiful, and so out of that, we're gonna develop as good a relationship we can with everybody in the animal kingdom in this quarter.
That's right.
Alright?
Thank you.
So thank you for being here tonight.
Well, thank you, sir.
Like I say, Harold, anxious to go with somebody. Alright, Harold, see ya. Alright, I'd like to call this time Jorge Ventura up front, he's got a presentation he's gonna make.
Hello, hi, guys. Well, my sir, good afternoon, how you, everybody doing today? So, my name is Jorge Ventura, I'm a white man, we live here in a community, we're small business owners. And we have been blessed, you know, that we are able to give back to our community. And we hold a business expo every year, this year was our third annual business expo, and we do it in the month of May. We do it inside the mall, and it's a fundraiser, we're able to raise funds for a good cause. You know, every year, I mean, for the last three years, we've been giving back to Gabriel's house. Everybody's familiar with Gabriel Fernandez, right? So we're able to come up with some funds for them, for the kids. They have after-school programs to take the kids off the street and teach them musical, photography, videography, social media, and things like that. So this year, you know, we have an event, so we have a presentation we want to give to Gabriel's house. Anybody from Gabriel's house?
Here we go, come on up. Yeah, let's bring Mike up, too.
So we have a check for you guys. And I know the first year, they used it for the folkloric department, the second year was for the music department. I believe you guys were able to buy a keyboard and things like that. So, we have a small check for you guys, because we couldn't print the big checks. So we'd like to present Gabriel's house with a thousand dollars this year.
There we go, picture.
So, you know, I invite all of you guys, we're all in this community, we're part of the community, no matter what we are, what religion, what ethnic, or whatever we are, we all want community here. And we want to ensure that we all give back, okay, we want to continue to do this, so we encourage all of you guys to get involved. I know that I'm going to do something next year for the first time. We're doing our very, very, very first taco festival. And the taco festival is so that we can raise some funds and give to three or four different organizations back. And so, it's in June of next year, so stay, you know, tuned with that. So, thank you, guys, thank you.
I think for Ventura Graphics, and surely their company, very active in the community, doing lots of good things. But for Gabriel's house is a great pick, is what it does for kids. And they were just involved with our sister city visitation, they developed music for that. But they're really active in the community, and the idea to give people, inspire them, and their opportunity maybe to be involved in passion, the arts, or dance, or music, or photography, all of that is very important. So, don't forget me to Gabriel's house, your offer is awesome, and we appreciate you, thank you.
Thank you.
Alright? Okay? Alright, item three on our agenda. Item five on your city council agenda is waiver for review of writs of motion.
Second.
We have a motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
And an aye?
Any opposed?
So ordered. Alright, item six, this is our consent calendar. This is an opportunity to, for the public, if you want to address the council on any item on the consent calendar, which is item seven on your agenda, and it's seven, one through seven sixteen, those are consent calendar items. Typically, we could enact them all in one motion in a second. However, if the public would like us to, considerable in an item for further discussion, this would be your opportunity to do so. It's only for items seven, consent calendar items. Anybody from the public wish to approach the council on this item? Yes, sir, you ready to read?
Jason Zink. First of all, I just want to, for the record, I want to object that Mayor Jim Ledford is able to vote on anything in the council, being that he has criminal charges against him, felony criminal charges against him from the DA, from collecting money from a company that was hired by the city to go out there and do stuff, and he didn't disclose that he was getting paid by that company for that. So I think that was wrong. Politicians are like baby ciber, they need to be changed often in order to keep the baby healthy. Need-term limits in the city for this one reason. A person shouldn't serve thirty years on a city council as mayor and not expect something to go, you know, to go dirty. So, I object to that. The other thing is, I'd like to pull 7.9, just to explain to the public about how important this project is. And also, I'd like to know why you haven't contacted Supervisor Arger in order to fund this. There's, you know, twenty to forty million dollars from probate funds that we did not, that she's sitting on right now, discretionary funds. And Animal Valley, we paid $150 million into the county bond measure over the thirty years, and we've only received $45 million back from LA. This is another reason why I think the mayor failed us. Also, 7.13, the ten-year capital improvement plan. This should be not just a consent calendar, this should be, have a whole public hearing and get input from the community, and the city should tell the community about this ten-year plan of spending hundreds of millions of dollars for our future. This is the second most important document the city has. The first being the general plan, and the second being the ten-year capital improvement project plan. And for us just to do a consent counter and not let the public have any input, and not knowing what's going on in the agenda, I mean, you guys could say you had a workshop, but ninety-nine, ninety-nine point nine percent of the public did not know about this workshop. It wasn't advertised in the paper, it wasn't on Facebook, it wasn't on the city website, there was no press releases or anything. You guys are not engaged for the public, and I would like a special meeting where the people can be engaged. Thank you.
Thank you. You all would like to approach the council. Alright, seeing none. Let's now go to our council, so, we have a consent counter. Any requests to pull items for discussion?
I'd like to pull 7.3 and 7.14.
7.3, 7.14.
7.6 coming.
Anybody else? How about a motion? Got a motion second to approve the consent counter with the exception of item 7.3, 7.6, and 7.14. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? So, let's go to item 7.3.
I pulled that one because it's about getting a truck that's gonna help us pick up the trash that's been around the city. I know that's an issue, ongoing issue for our city lately, so I wanted to thank staff for getting this through and getting this coming. Majority of this is actually funded through the Wason contract, it's only over $207,000. It only got coming out of the CIs, the $7,000. But this truck will help the city go around and pick up all the trash that's been around our city, and it'll all clean it up. It's a special truck that's designed for picking up large amounts of trash that's been done, so. I want to say thanks to the staff once again, and this is gonna be huge asset to our city, helping keep it clean and even help the lives up.
The fourth thing is to call it in. Call it in, use the app that's online, let them know where it's at, because they don't drive around looking for it, they respond to the complaint, so help them out.
Also, I decided, I had a meeting with SAVMA, a local organization, and they invited me to be part of the meeting because they want to put together a desert cleanup project. And I did mention, decided, come to the CIs soon. The idea was to utilize this piece of equipment on a regular basis, maybe twice a year, desert cleanup effort.
Be more than that.
I'm okay with it, nothing.
Okay. Well, this was for SAVMA, they said they wanted to get the community engaged. However, in that meeting with them, again, I did mention that this piece of equipment was not gonna be agenda tonight. And I did mention that we should be expecting this piece of equipment in the next two, three months. I understand it's gonna take a bit longer than that, because it's a special piece of equipment that has to be put together, it's gonna take some time. So just in effort of clarity and transparency with SAVMA, I just wanted to let you guys know that this piece of equipment won't be available in the next two, three months, the site there is gonna be. Thanks for putting this aside, I thought of putting this aside, Councilor Nishel, thank you.
Yeah, this item isn't gonna clean up our desert. It still takes sweat equity, and we do many cleanups throughout the year, and I know we're getting a lot of calls from people about trash. So, yeah, I think, the way we do the cleanup is gonna be a long time, so I hope we keep scheduling cleanups now. And I think that's exactly what's happening, we have some volunteer efforts we're working on. Alright, anything else on 7.3?
Just for what it's worth, if it's at the curb, they're able to get it.
Right.
I'm not telling you to do anything, I'm just telling you, if it's at the curb, it's easier for them to get it.
How about a motion?
Who to approve?
Second.
Got a motion and a second, any other discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? So ordered without objection, let's go to item 7.6.
Thank you, Mayor, thanks for pulling that item. The reason I request to pull that item is because this is something really exciting to the entire city. The beginning of our general plan is a great opportunity for everyone to participate. We had a couple of workshops where we had counsel and some public input. We discussed what the general plan should look like, and I mentioned that the environmental justice element should be in our new general plan, something that is state now mandates. I also talked about including a social equity element, and I am really happy to see that these two items are gonna be part of our general plan. I also talked about making an economic development element stand in by itself. There was initial discussion to include an economic development throughout the general plan. But I felt it was important to have its own economic development element in the new general plan, because it is such an important thing for our city. I'm really happy to see that these elements and components made it to the RFP. I'm really happy to see that Remy and Associates have been selected for this project, they're a great company. Thank you, staff, thank you, council, for giving staff direction to have these elements included. The reason I do this is very learning for me, because it's funded, I believe, will benefit greatly from these elements in the general plan. Because it will give us a chance to be a part of the rest of the city. Thanks, council, again, for giving staff direction to do that. Thank you, staff, and Remy and Associates, well, if there's anyone here from that firm, thank you for putting that meet for this project. We will engage with you, thank you.
Well, we'll thank them when we're all done, too.
And there will be opportunities for everyone to participate, there will be committees formed. And again, this is just a great opportunity for all of us to be able to set the vision, the goals, objectives of where the city of Palmdale is gonna go. Thanks again for pulling that in.
Alright, any other thoughts? Motion?
Who to approve?
Got a motion and a second, any other discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? So ordered without objection. Go to item 7.14.
I pulled this one, I need to refuse myself as a pundit's caution for having done business with this city, I'm sorry.
Okay, any thoughts on this item, any discussions, questions?
No, who to approve?
Second.
Got a motion, we have a second, final discussion? All those in favor, say aye? Aye? Those opposed? So ordered without objection. Alright, I can taste here the consent counter. What I would like to do, somebody, oh, there he is. I'm gonna move up to the new business, item 10.1, the Community Workforce Agreement. Let's take that item on right now.
Before we do that, I have a question for our city attorney.
Before we start, I need to refuse myself, this one, this one is all recently created business. You gotta go back before you think through.
The question for our city attorney is, as you know, some of us are up for reelection or reelection. I am one of them, and I am being targeted for supporting labor unions. I feel proudly represented by a labor union. I am a member of Team Source 1932, proud to be here. But lately, there's been some misinformation, in my opinion, as to why we elected officials or anyone running for office receives donations by the labor unions. I want to fully disclose that I have received in the past donations for my campaign, as Mayor Ledford has for many years, up to 2013.
Myself as well.
Most of us have. But I wanted to make sure that this is not going to be a conflict of interest. My understanding is that as long as I utilize those labor donations for my campaign, I can fully receive them and spend them for my campaign expenses. As long as I use it for personal gain, other than my.
That would be illegal.
Correct, but again, I want clarification that it will be not a conflict of interest.
Now, under, under state law, under state law, you're not required to refuse yourself because of a campaign donation if it is, as you say, applied towards campaign, campaign uses and not for personal gain.
Thank you.
Very good. Well, certainly, this item didn't get on the agenda unless we had support from the council, so. We are here, and then after some time, we've been able to put together an agreement that everybody can come together on. Do we have somebody that wants to make a report on the staff level?
I would just say on Jim's behalf, he appreciates the cooperation with the unions in this agreement. He appreciates the support of the elected officials in advocating for an agreement that works for both sides. And I think any good deal has things that both sides can live with, and both sides, I think, compromise to good behavior. And we look forward to rebuilding this city collectively with our union brothers with us. That's what I want to say.
Matt?
I just want to add one short one. I want to thank Chris Hannah, I don't see him here tonight, but from the trades council.
Chris had some medical issues, his kid was born, had to have surgery immediately after being born, and so he's kind of tied up with that, that would be my priority as well, so I just spoke with him a while ago.
I just hope someone from the union will tell him.
We have a lot of.
He was very, very helpful and very understanding in recognizing the city's needs. And I think we came out with a much better agreement because of it.
And I want to thank them for incorporating a request to have a strong drive towards incorporating local union members, and that was one of my big stated points, was make sure we include the girls. So thank you for doing that, putting that into the contract, I do absolutely appreciate it.
Yes, we even have language in there to help people that are homeless.
And the veterans.
So, the agreement's got lots of elements that I think are good for our community, and it just strengthens the relationship we already have, so. I think we're all excited about the possibility of this thing passing tonight, let's hope. So why don't we start, let's call for some public comments. I know we, I mentioned Ron Miller's here, Ron heads up the Orange County LA Building Trades. I think he was probably summing up for us pretty good. I think he was probably summing up for us pretty good. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, honorable mayor, city council members and staff. I'm Ron Miller, executive secretary of the LA Orange County Building Trades. I'm here on behalf of forty-eight local unions across fourteen trades, district councils, and many of them you see here tonight. We represent one hundred and forty thousand skilled and trained craftsmen and women in LA, Orange County, and of course, a large population that lives here in the Antelope Valley. I have to say, a population here that is growing. And the reason we're growing here is due to partnerships like we're going to create tonight. We're creating this area, and yes, it includes a community workforce agreement, that's one of the reasons. But we also have a pre-apprenticeship program in place at Antelope Valley College and a community partnership with Youth Build. And together with the CWA, it creates a pipeline for your community members to get into good paying careers in building trades. So I want to thank the staff for their hard work, working with Mr. Hannan from my office. He didn't want to be here tonight, but he and his wife are celebrating the birth of their second child. And so hats off to you guys for working with us. And we think this is a good partnership for the city, the community, and the building trades. And I'll be available for any questions, but we look forward to working with you. And will all the men and women of the building trades stand up?
But aren't standing.
Very good.
And I can tell you that we can have a few from the local area come up here and speak if you'd like, or we can get out of your hair, but most of the...
All right, with that, anybody else want to speak? Yes, sir.
Jason's Inc. I just want to make sure that the union, when in effect, I'd like to see the city develop a summer youth job program where the kids come out of high school during the summertime and go plant trees and replace old bushes and stuff like that to beautify the city. So I want to make sure the union doesn't infringe on that opportunity for young people and actually helps encourage it and works with them. I'm a big believer in the union, but also I understand sometimes the union makes it unfeasible to do things with costs, labor costs and stuff like that. But I'm supportive of that. Also, the capital improvement program, I think these people, the workers out there, would love to be involved in that to know what capital projects, you know, that are ten, you know, hundreds of millions of dollars of, so they know about their future, what jobs that they could be part of, you know, and live for and helping the city. Also, you know, like, somebody named Tom Lackey, who's running for reelection, he has, we have lost out on hundreds of millions of dollars in funding because he did not secure funding for his districts. He didn't secure, we had two part law measures, one in June that passed for four billion, we have another one, eight billion, and then we have cap and trade, and we have the transportation bill that he voted against. But he not only voted against, even though he knew they would pass by the Democrats, he didn't secure any funding for his district, nor did Scott Wilk, Senator Scott Wilk. How can you do this? They're going to be paying on these bonds for forty years, and Antelope Valley receives no benefits because they want to play party games and not secure funding? This is hundreds of millions of dollars that would have put these people to work, their future. So I wanted just to let the public know about that, that we need change. A seventy minute lack in his fillness, and I just support this motion.
Yes, sir.
Good evening, more time. Is this thing on?
I'm Johnny Kenji, business agent with the Ironworkers Local Four Thirty Three. And as you can see, guys, in the last three years, the ironworkers have taken about two hundred of your AV residents and gave them a future. Working with Ron Miller and Chris Hannan, we've seen the rise of the population of LA growing, and I'm sure you guys have the vision to see it's coming this way.
Yes, it is.
So with a lot of these guys, we've done a lot of our recruiting from Youth Build, Charter School. Matter of fact, I'm going to the college, we recruit from AV College, the anti-recidivism courses out here. Also, our main thing is, I take pride in this, as hell, it's a hard ass. I have several of our soldiers here who like to speak and just the opportunity the ironworkers were able to give to them. And, you know, there's always miscalculations or misinterpretations of what union's about, you know, so I'm not repeating myself, as you know, I'm fifth generation, I don't know any better. But, you know, my father, he started fairly young, and, you know, he went to work, he brought me and my brother and my sister to private school, certain things he did, but I had to sacrifice without a lot of things in life. So I'm grateful for everything I've got, everything my father did. But he went to work, seven twelve overtime, so I didn't see a lot of my father. And, you know, one thing I do hold to, he always found the time to play catch with me and my brother. He missed my senior year of football, which was disappointing because he had to go out of work, work slowed down, out here, he had to go to Pittsburgh and go back to work. The reason why I mention that, guys, is because in this community, we're talking funds, as we grow, these community workforce agreements are going to put my boys to work and my girls. You know, this is a family, okay? Anything, guys, prevailing wage, anything less than that, I call slave wage labor. You know, I've gone through, I was in the field for twenty-two years. I've been a business agent for about a year and a half, so a little over twenty-three years in the industry. I've gone through three knee surgeries, I've got arthritis in my lower back, I've got torn cartilage in my shoulder, still got to get that worked on, broke my foot, wrist surgery, and I'm not even talking about the boobs, you know, bumps and bruises, fingers, because it's not an easy career, guys. This is a career where we have to do thirty to forty years to earn a retirement for our healthcare and a fair wage, and that's all it is. And like I say, guys, I've stressed before, I get calls, these guys are getting twenty bucks just cash, they come from out of town, and they get abused, man. And what's unfortunately, you can get these guys that are forty, fifty years old, and they're just trying to see where they go, they don't have a retirement. To know that they're going to have to work the rest of their lives, it's disappointing. And one thing we do not discriminate from age, we don't discriminate from anything. We don't care what you're, as long as you're out there to work your butt off and be tradable. That's what the ironworkers and the other building trades, that's what we're looking for. And we love to do more recruitment out here for you and your community, but we need the help from you and your funds, of course, with these agreements, it's beautiful, and my hats are off to you, me and my boys, if you guys don't mind. Give these people a round of applause. We need the funds, guys, and we need the work out here. Like I said, for me to do my job and, you know, help individuals out in life, I need your help, too. So that's all I got to say, and like I said, I'd like for you guys to hear my guys' stories.
If I could just take a minute, number one, I'd like to thank the ironworkers for the apprenticeship program with AV Youth Build. It's a great opportunity, it's our first in the Antelope Valley. You guys stepped up, and hopefully we're going to see more. I can tell you that we have a billion dollars worth of transportation coming to this Antelope Valley, a billion with a B. And we need to train the workforce to be able to build that. And I'd like to see that workforce come from our community. That's what this agreement does. This agreement also focuses on the hard ass, or...
Heroes to hard ass.
That's right, heroes to hard ass. And that's going to focus on our veterans. Our goal here is to eliminate any homeless veteran in Palmdale. We think we can do it, this program's going to help us get it.
Our guy is down at the weld shop, so the college has been very grateful for giving us their services and bringing life to the students in the college also. I actually got a weld instructor, he don't want to speak, but he's going to speak. But he's been golden with our guys, he's been doing a hell of a job, and that'd be actually the first guy I'd like to speak. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Yes, sir. If I could just get your name for the...
Sure, my name is Travis Lee, and I work down at the college in the welding program, and also part-time with Ironworkers Union over there in the weld shop. And I've seen, seen firsthand, them grabbing and placing students out of our community in jobs. And that is the hardest thing that's been out here. The college has always offered many trades to choose from, but we lack the work to place it. And with the Local Four Thirty Three coming in, making the present known, being a part of our community, we're placing young men and women to work. And that's the best thing that we can get out. You know, our future is truly with the men and women who build America. And I'm proud to be a part of it, and I just want to say thank you all.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Good evening, honorable mayor, councilmember, staff. My name is Mitch Klein, and with the International Brotherhood of Electrical Workers. I can't let John take all the line, so let me tell you about my life. No, I won't get into that. But I do want to thank you for the Community Workforce Agreement. I do want to say that we're part of the college program, MC Three. We have taken in hundreds and hundreds of people from the community on our projects, and this is going to help immensely with the city of Palmdale and all the work coming up. The good thing is that this does not discriminate against any contractors, although some contractors might think so. This is non-discrimination. So anyone can bid these projects, they get these projects, now they just have to follow the rules. That's where this is at. But I do want to thank you very much, this is going to go a long ways. Thank you.
Mitch, you bring up the pre-apprenticeship program is really across the board, all the trades. So that's here, and that's good. So good point. Yes, sir. Could I have your name?
Good evening, mayor, good evening, city council. My name is Larry, I'm with the Four Thirty Three Ironworkers, and I am through Hell is the Hard Ass. My family, I grew here, my family lives here, goes to schools here, I coach the football here.
Get closer.
I'm close, okay. I've been out here all my life, and I joined the military, and I did ten years in combat at Kansas City. When I got out of the military, I struggled, so life a little bit harder for me to adapt to. And couldn't really get in group anything because there was no camaraderie with my brotherhood. And so I fell into the ironworkers and ran into that brotherhood that I had when I was overseas in the military. It helped build me up, it helped get me back into the group. If it wasn't for them, I, you know, I'd still be struggling and letting my family down. So working my own backyard, helping, coached my kids, be there at football games, do all those events, and not missing anything, which I did a lot of that in the military.
Very good. Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Good evening. My name is Crystal Smith, I'm with IBW LA. And I want to thank you guys for the Community Workforce Agreement, working with the union that has brought together the brotherhood and sisterhood, of course. And I love my job, I love what we do, it's just pain, struggling, I have to get up at 2:00 AM, drive all the way down to the Rams Stadium, I am on the Rams Stadium. And knowing that there's work right here in our own backyards. And then not only that, we do a lot to give back to our own community. Most of our things that we do are volunteer work and everything, unfortunately in LA, because that's where we're going to school, going to work, and doing everything there. So we do go in high schools, pull those kids in to the union, show them the ropes, keep them out of the street, keep them away from trouble, they have a support system. We also have a second call to get ex-offenders off the street, to show them, hey, you don't have to do that, come learn how to do this, there's another round. We also pull them home this, hey, come this way, there's hope, you have a drug problem, we can help, here's the support system, this is how you do it, this is what we do. And I would love to see us being able to get back here. Every year we go to give service, we collect food for the homeless and do a food drive for mothers that have children that are in hard times, that need help, that need just whatever. And the union has an open door policy for all, and everyone's welcome. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Good evening, my name is Nick Jeanne. I've been a part of this community for thirty years, a small business owner. I recently went back to AV College, went to their weld shop program where I learned a lot of valuable skills from Travis, that where I also came in part with the Four Thirty Three Ironworkers, and like I said, they don't discriminate. I'm fifty years old, they got me out there, they hired me, hooked me to work, gave me a new skill and a new trade that I can take care of my family at the age of fifty and maybe be able to retire, and medical dental benefits. I've seen some of these young men that are in here, in this crowd, that are part of the Youth Build, that are getting a career, they have families, they couldn't find jobs in our community, I think this is great for jobs for our community, skilled jobs, you know, where we come back and we spend our money in our community, we're home at night with our kids. This is the first time in thirty years, because I was a business owner, that I go home and I eat dinner with my family and have the weekends off. That's a nice thing. And I know these guys would like to be in our community, doing the same thing, we'd really love to have that work. That's what I've got to say.
Good. Thank you. Thank you. Raiders always have some say.
My name is Luis Lopez, I'm with the Ironworkers. I graduated from Unionville six years ago. It was a process to get into the ironworkers. Took about a year and a half, and they selected five of us, between five and ten of us, and it was both men, of course. And at that time, I was working at McDonald's, so I was making little to nothing. And being a part of this unit has changed my life. I made a lot of money, I made a lot more money working out here than going down the hill. Right now, I'm waking up, 2:30, 2:45 in the morning, just to drive all the way down downtown. And it's, I'm spending more money driving out there than I am during the hell. So being able to get that agreement passed, it'd be nice.
All right. Thank you. All right, anybody else?
Always one more.
I won't be long. You know me.
Yes, sir.
My name is Dan Reynolds. I'm in here transplant out here from offstate New York. My lovely fiance and I landed here due to a medical malfunction. And we decided to stay. In the process, I engaged with the MC Three program, just recently completed. And also, I'm in the process of engaging with the Electrical Union Local Eleven. In that process, as the child or master toolmaker, actually the master toolmaker for Corning Incorporated in Corning, New York, if you've ever had coffee from a Corning Pyrex coffee pot, my father designed that. Plus or minus two thousand, two ten thousand, seven inch is a sloppy tolerance in my family. I was exposed to, I was privileged, actually, to be exposed to the carpenters union, the ironworkers union, and the electrical union training centers. Ladies and gentlemen, they're better than any college trade school program I've ever been exposed to. Their standards are amazing, and I'm not easy to please. I was raised by those people, you know, the World War One, World War Two, survived the Great Depression people, the ones today, they call them the great ones.
They saved the world.
Yes, sir, they did. What I'm saying is, I was raised around construction, tooling, sheet metal fab, you name it. And my experience here has been amazing. What these people represent is not something I'm going to attempt to describe here, it would take too long. Nonetheless, I'm... Nonetheless, I'm privileged to be associated with these individuals, and I think you, as a community, are tremendously privileged to have them available to you. So, I really hope you're good. Thank you.
Hello, my name is James Albertins, and I'm a union ironworker. And... So, what I want to say is that it's good to see a city council that understands and gets it right. So many times, all that it takes to, for the city council to get a project launched and going, and then it happens, and you're hoping that, you know, for your community, but the big out-of-town contractors roll in with their employees, and they burn those paychecks and take it back home out of county, to wherever they came from, with them. So this city council is getting it right, with Palmdale jobs are going to be for residents of this area. This money will be in residence for this area, and you know, the economics of that is powerful. It keeps the insurance and stays in this area. So I just want to say, it's so good to see a city council that gets it right.
Okay.
One more, one more, one more. My name is Brian Goodes. Thank you guys for what you guys are doing. I just wanted to add, I am a Local 433 apprentice, eighth period, about to graduate, and I think the best thing that I can say about the apprenticeship school is safety. Not only are you guys going to put us to work, but the injury numbers are going to be super low, not like the private industry, you know, broken legs and so forth, but safety is first, that's what they teach. I mean, I'm a welder, I went to school, I got retrained through my apprenticeship program, but with that training, I've been able to buy a house out here in Eda Verde, and God bless Palmdale. I just hope you guys push this forward. Safety first.
Not on the list.
There is a list. You're up.
My name is Mary Michaels. I'm retired from ironworkers 433. I was born in nineteen eighty. I became a single mom, had two boys, I had been making a little above minimum wage as a county clerk in a furniture store. The ironworkers totally trained me, three years of apprenticeship school after work every night. And I made good money over the years, some good retirement plan, and I have given the money back. I know how to spend. And stuff like that, buy at the markets, all the stores. So I don't keep the money, I give it back to the industry. And if it wasn't for the union, I would have lived a life of poverty, and I can't even imagine what my social security check would be. I know women, I have women friends, and they had low-paid jobs. They don't get any social security, five hundred dollars a month, how can they even live in an apartment? They're all moving into motorhomes, going out to the desert, or so forth, and that's four. So I have the ironworkers to thank for twenty-six good years, and I love my work, twenty-six years, and I worked all the time as a welder, that's all. So I want to thank my union for all the training they've given me, and my passion, and everything. Thank you.
Okay. Who else? Well, I want to thank everybody for providing a comment. Come on up, please.
This is the youngest...
The youngest member of the unions coming up.
We have the superintendent with you.
Yeah. My name is Mike Lesmeister. I'm a union ironworker, Local 433. This is McKeney Jean Lesmeister. I got into the union in January of two thousand and five. I'm very fortunate that before I had my family right here, I joined the family. These are all my brothers right here, and this is my family. And it's unfortunate sometimes that we spend more time with this family than we do this family. You know, making an extra hour and a half drive down the hill takes away three hours of my family time with his family.
One more.
And... Four more.
One more.
Four more, depending on where you're working out there.
I've seen, in my career so far, I've seen young men and young women be able to turn their lives around, make somehow their life that they would have never done before, firsthand. I came here to represent my brothers, to support my brother John Canyon, and to show my honor.
That's your dad.
Yeah, thank you, thank you very much for your time.
You know, you can watch this on the archive, the city website, so it'll be there for... All right, any other speakers? All right, let's go ahead and, let's now go to the item itself. Anybody want to make a motion?
I want to move to approve the item.
Second.
Got a motion, second. I think this is groundbreaking. This is going to set the relationship, and I'm telling you, a billion dollars in transportation is coming. You guys are going to build it. It's all coming in relation to that. Even if a lot of residents, our kids, can take advantage of the work, and we keep it here in the Antelope Valley, so this agreement touches a lot of that. I want to congratulate both sides, coming together, we've got a good position to start from, and promise that it'll only get any better. That's my two cents.
I'd like to, I'd just like to have... The relationship that's been built with Youth Build, I was at a conference back east, and to hear Youth Build and our college and our MC3 program being talked about on the national level, I mean, that's, and I'm sitting there, and I have city reps from all over the United States, and they're hearing about the Antelope Valley, they're hearing about Palmdale, they're hearing about our college, they're hearing about our programs. I think the MC3 program is really amazing. You know, I go to these graduations, I see Johnny there, Chris Hannan, Larry, Dan was just a recent graduate there. You also have that program up at Fenner Canyon, that MC3 program, to get these guys steered back onto the right, that they make some bad choices, they're going to make some good ones now. So those are guys that are going to be out there working with you. I think that, you know, I've been a union guy all my life, a local one-twelve, L.A. City firefighters, you guys are crazy, I've been up on that iron with you guys, you guys are crazy, okay? But it's good work, I admire what you guys do. My son's a local eleven. That career's enabled him to buy a second house, he's got a nice place, he's got a nice car, he's got a nice wife and nice kids, and that's what it's all about, so.
Any others?
For me, I want to recognize staff's effort. I know that our staff put a lot of time and effort. J.J., our city attorney, Jean Pratil, who's not here tonight, Matt D. Segtze, working on revising the reviewing, the CWA, and that, we're spending a lot of our time, and everybody else, who is there going to be, the city, who has put large amounts of time, making sure that this is on a board for the benefit of all parties, and that every union, the city of Palmdale and its residents. Thank you guys for putting that together.
Anything else?
Call for a question.
Got a motion, we have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? So that passes with four aye votes. Well, very good. Now for the record, we had Councilman Bishop had to abstain, or, no, he wasn't present, William of St. James. Yeah, all right, let's take a short break.
Thank you guys. Thank you.
City council agenda, and if we go to item eight, public hearings, what we have here is a review of proposed resolution, CC 2018-060. It's the local Edward Byron Memorial Justice Assistance Grant. Who gets to make this presentation? Oh, here they go.
Thank you and good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Staff has requested a public hearing for resolution number CC 2018-060. I will read the resolution. A resolution of the city council of the city of Palmdale authorizing application for the U.S. Department of Justice, Office of Justice Programs, Bureau of Justice Assistance, JAG Program, 2018 Local Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant Program. The adoption of this resolution will authorize the submission of the application and implementation of the JAG grant and direct the city manager or his designated to execute any documents relating to the application, acceptance, and implementation of the grant. The city is eligible to receive a 2018 allocation of JAG funds of fifty-eight thousand nine hundred and eighty-seven dollars for fiscal year 2018-19. The grant funds are proposed to offset a portion of the cost of two motorcycle deputies, the remaining three hundred and seventy-one thousand three hundred and fifty-eight dollars to be paid by the general fund or previously approved through the budget process. As required by the JAG guidelines, copies of the application were made available to the public to review for thirty days. No comments have been received. Staff is available for questions.
All right, are there any questions from staff at this time?
I just wanted to show the public that I'm not voting my money towards the sheriff's department, I'm only voting on whether or not we should have this hearing.
Okay.
A question, are these new positions or maintaining existing positions?
Maintaining existing.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Let's go ahead and open the public hearing. Anybody wish to testify on this item, you may come forward and give us your name to the record.
Seeing none, move to close public hearing. Second.
Got a motion, second, close public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So ordered. All right, questions or motion?
Move it through.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anybody opposed? So ordered. Let's now go to item eight point two.
Good evening. I would like to begin by reading the title of the resolution. A resolution of the city council of the city of Palmdale approving entertainment permit number eighteen dash thirteen and dance permit number eighteen dash fourteen for the Royal Banquet Hall located at 2015 East Palmdale Boulevard, Palmdale, California, 93550. In May, the planning commission approved a conditional use permit to allow banquet facility... Sorry about that. Banquet facilities are spiraling. The hours of operation are limited to 10:00 a.m. to midnight, similar to other banquet facilities in the city. The application was reviewed by the sheriff's department, and they found that there had been no calls for service at this vacant space. The use is surrounded on three sides by commercial uses, with residential uses being located over one hundred feet away to the north. The city council has the option to approve, continue, or deny the request. It is recommended that the city council adopt resolution CC 2018-068, approving the request. That concludes our report. Happy to answer any questions.
Any questions at this time? All right, not seeing any, let's go ahead and open the public hearing. Anybody wish to make testimony? Come forward and give us your name to the record, please.
Seeing none, move to close public hearing.
Second.
Got a motion, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? So ordered. Questions or motion?
Move to adopt resolution number CC 2018-068.
Second.
Got a motion, got a second. Any question, discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? So ordered. Let's go to item eighty point three.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. The item being considered is the adoption of resolution number CC 2018-066. And I'll read the resolution. It's a resolution of the city council of the city of Palmdale approving the form and authorizing the execution of an agreement of purchase and sale and joint escrow instructions and certain lease financing documents in connection with the purchase and financing of the city records retention building, which was previously leased by the city, and authorizing and directing certain actions with respect thereto. So currently, the records center is leasing a building located at 616 Rancho Vista Boulevard. We've been renting the building since 2002, and we've been paying, or currently we're paying over six thousand dollars a month for the rent. Currently, recently, the owners of the building indicated they would like to liquidate their assets or either charge annual or monthly rents of over ten thousand dollars a month. So they did offer to sell the building for one point two million. We considered several different options before coming to the conclusion that purchasing the building was the best one. So the first option that we considered was an alternative site. And we, as staff looked into the different sites that we could possibly rent, and it was hard to come by, we determined that it would cost over sixty-eight thousand dollars for each mile of cable that was needed if that site did not have the internet service that was required. We also looked into just storing our records off-site, an off-site facility, and determined that would cost over a hundred and sixty thousand dollars annually. So you can see that purchasing the building was the best option. We did have an appraisal conducted, or appraisal prepared on the property, and it was appraised at one point two million, and the exact amount that we're purchasing it for. So we have, our underwriters submitted bids to different lenders, and we did choose a bid for interest rate of three point five percent over a fifteen-year period. We will be paying a hundred and eight thousand approximately on average annually to pay down this debt. There will be no prepayment penalties if we do find that we have funding in the future and we'd like to pay it off. So the city council resolution will approve and form the following documents, an agreement for purchase and sale and joint escrow, a signed facility leased between the PFA and the city, and as you'll see on another item under the Palmdale Financing Authority, we will lease the property from the PFA or the Palmdale Financing Authority. You will approve a lease agreement between the city and the PFA, and a letter agreement for purchase and rate law between the purchaser and the city, and the rate is three point five percent. And I'm available for any questions.
All right, any questions at this time, public council? All right, seeing none, go ahead and open the public hearing. On this item, if you wish to make testimony, come forward and give us your name to the record, please.
Seeing none, move to close.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? So ordered. Discussion, question, or motion?
I just want to make sure this isn't going to interrupt any of the current businesses there, as far as noise and disturbance and stuff like that.
I'm sorry.
Actually, it's already, it's already there, it's not going anywhere. We're not going to change anything, we're just going to buy the building, so it shouldn't create any disruption.
And somebody asked a question, there will be no interruptions.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Move to adopt resolution number CC 2018-066. Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? So ordered. Passed unanimously. Let's now go to item nine. This is a joint special report. Successor agency. What I'd like to do is to call the successor agency, I think, to order. So let's do that with a call to order and then a roll call, please.
Chair Ledford?
Here.
Vice Chair Correa?
Here.
Director Hoffbauer?
Here.
Director Bettencourt?
Here.
Director Bishop?
Here.
Move the forum.
Item three is a waiver pool reading resolutions.
Is that moved?
Second.
Got a motion, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Passed unanimously. Let's go to item four, consent counter. Public comments. Again, this is like earlier. This is a consent counter. If you wish to approach the council about pulling an item for further discussion, this would be your chance to do so. Anybody want to?
For what?
Pull this item for discussion on the consent counter.
Which one?
Item five is the consent counter on the successor agency agenda. It's, it's investment balances and minutes. So it's not.
Move to approve?
Second.
Got a motion, second to approve. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? So ordered. Okay, now we're at item six. This is the joint special report for the City Council and successor agency.
Mayor and council, the item before you tonight is placed on the agenda because the Tuesday, November 6, 2018 regular meetings of the City Council and successor agency fall on the night of the city's general municipal election. Council can cancel the November 6 regular meetings and adjourn the October 2, 2018 City Council and successor agency meetings at 7:00 p.m. to Tuesday, November 13 at 7:00 p.m. Staff recommends adopting joint resolution, and I'll read the resolution. Joint Resolution Number CC 2018-071 and Successor Agency 2018-009, a joint resolution of the City Council of the City of Palmdale and the successor agency to the Community Redevelopment Agency of the City of Palmdale regarding the cancellation of the regular meetings scheduled for Tuesday, November 6, 2018, and rescheduling the meetings to November 13, 2018 at 7:00 p.m. The council can direct the city clerk secretary to prepare and publish a notice of cancellation of the regular meetings and adjourn tonight's City Council and successor agency meetings to Tuesday, November 13 at 7:00 p.m. in the council chambers. I'm here if you have any questions.
Any questions at this time? All right. Seeing none, I'm going to call for public comments. Anybody who wish to make comment? This will be your opportunity to come forward and just give us your name for the record. This is about continuation of the council meeting?
No.
You want public, you want public comments, don't you? Almost there.
Almost there.
All right. Any, no comments? How about a motion?
Move to approve the item?
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Any questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? So ordered without objection. Okay. It takes us to the public comment period of the successor agency. It takes us to the public comment period of the City Council Agenda. However, let's call and order the Palmdale Finance Authority. And if I can have a roll call, please.
Chair Ledford?
Here.
Vice Chair Correa?
Here.
Director Hoffbauer?
Here.
Director Bettencourt?
Here.
Director Bishop?
Here.
Move the forum.
Item three, waiver pool reading.
Is that moved?
Second.
Got a motion, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? So ordered. Here we are at the consent counter. Again, this is the consent counter four point one. This is minutes from the previous meeting. There's also a call for public comments. Anybody who wish to make a public comment on this item? Merely come forward and give us your name. All right. Seeing none? How about a motion?
Move to approve?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? So ordered without objection. We're now at the public hearing of the Finance Authority, item five point one. And Karen is back.
So, Mayor and council members, this item is related to the purchase of the records center or the building that is currently holding the records. So I'll read the resolution to you. This is Resolution Number PFA 2018-003. It's a resolution of the Palmdale Financing Authority of the City of Palmdale approving the form and authorizing the execution of certain lease financing documents in connection with the financing of acquisition of the city's records retention building, which was previously leased by the city and directing certain actions with respect thereto. So now the Palmdale Financing Authority is an entity that's used to issue debt. So what you will be approving tonight is the site and facility lease, which takes the real property of the city and actually leases it to the city so they can lease, so the PFA can lease it back to the city to collect rent in order to pay the debt that the Palmdale Financing Authority will be issuing to pay for the building. So you will be approving that site and facility lease. You will approve the lease agreement and then assignment agreement. And that gives the Palmdale Financing Authority the right to receive the money in order to pay the debt. So once the debt's paid off, the property will go back to the city. Do you have any questions? I'm available.
Any questions at this time? All right. Seeing none? Let's go ahead and open the public hearing on this item. If you wish to testify, merely come forward and give us your name for the record. All right. Seeing none? How about a motion to close?
Is that moved?
Got a motion? Two seconds. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? So ordered without objection. Discussion or motion?
Move to approve the item?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? So ordered. All right, ladies and gentlemen, that takes us now to item six on our Palmdale Finance Authority meeting. Public comments. City Council Agenda, item 11, public comments. And our successor agency, item seven, public comments. Anybody wish to make comment? Merely come forward, give us your name for the record. Understand? We cannot take action on any item that is not addressed. Who would like to go first?
Mayor?
Council?
My name is Tony Rosso. It wasn't a long time ago that the young girl out there I adore, she's 14 years old, with tears, telling me she wanted to kill herself. Before that, a boy comes to my house. My father's beating my mother. More on a personal note, I have a niece. She was kidnapped or whatever, trafficked, sexually abused, and tortured. What's ironic in all these situations is they don't go to law enforcement. They keep it to themselves. They're either scared, ashamed, embarrassed. And this is just, and I'm trying to keep it to three minutes, it's just a few items. So what my proposal today is to I'm here today to propose to the City Council a week-long event under the banner, "A Week Without Hate, A Week Without Violence." It's a community event that says time to decide to address violence in a home, school, workplace, and places of worship by four steps. Awareness, connecting, educating, and engaging. By shake, it's both at Parkinson's. It's to get the work out. Awareness means making the community aware of the multitude of programs that are available to them right now through the City of Palmdale. Unfortunately, right now for most families, they do not know where and how and who to turn to for help. So this is an opportunity to get the work out. Connecting means having these institutions, organizations connect and share resources by communicating ideas dealing with hate and violence. For example, having the Palmdale Regional Hospital and the Mount Hill House Center coordinate with the Palmdale School District, Chamber of Commerce, business service groups, and religious groups by educating through discussions, lectures, and teaching materials in our schools and workplaces and in our neighborhoods that deal with domestic violence, racial, ethnic, religious, and sexual orientation tolerance. Engaging the community means just that, to bring to the schools, businesses, places of worship their ideas on how to reduce these issues and their input to how they feel regarding hatred and white. And how to do this? By forming a committee made up of the school district, Palmdale Hospital, for example. By using their skills, expertise, programs, materials that already exist in each institution. By using their organization structures, by having lectures, roundtables, essays, so forth, that deal with hate, anger, frustration that can lead to violence. So one we focus on hate and violence to change the dialogue and give the city a voice by letting the community know that they're itself. Instead of how it's become the new arm, which we've been hearing so much about shootings. That's it.
Well, thank you. And of course, you've given us all a handout. We appreciate that.
The big question is though, is your musician, what do you play? If you go to YouTube, you can see my video, "Classical Musician and Jazz Bass."
Very good. All right. Who else would like to speak? This man.
My name is Cynthia Chambers. I got a call from the National Sierra Club in Washington, D.C., an environmental organization, as you may know. They would like me, they asked me to give my story about my concerns about pollution in Palmdale. And so I told them why I moved here. I had cancer because I, and there were four cancers in my condo building in Moore Park because they built a freeway in my backyard. My husband got sick and we decided to move out here because the air is cleaner. Hopefully, it stays that way. But my question is, from the City of Palmdale is because the Sierra Club is concerned about new businesses moving in here, which may pollute this environment. They asked me to give a statement in their support from Washington, D.C., their legal office. And they're concerned about what businesses you approve in Palmdale that may pollute this environment here. So my question is, does the City of Palmdale plan to approve any business now or in the future that may cause unhealthy levels of pollution which may impact the health of its citizens? You will be hearing from the Sierra Club soon about their concern with pollution by businesses that are approved in this area. So that's my question.
Well, again, applications come every day. So it's hard to predict who in the future. But I would suggest maybe this is the most important part, is we do have a very thorough process of review, a very transparent process of review. Certainly, anybody that's interested in being on a list and be notified of these types of hearings, that's a possibility too. We have other entities that also check things like the air, the water. So you've got, again, a very thorough review process. Doesn't mean people aren't going to apply because we're a growing area. You heard it tonight with all these people looking to work. They're looking to build stuff. So.
And a healthy man.
Absolutely. Absolutely. But it still requires a process and a hearing. And so a full disclosure of what we're contemplating and the impacts come with it. So that gives everybody an opportunity to review it.
I would like to be on any, not any list of businesses that are being approved in this area. I would like to be on that list.
I think there's a process.
To know about it because the Sierra Club has asked me to do that.
Okay.
Yeah.
I think that's a matter of our staff.
As a former Sierra Club member, let me say that the best thing we can do for our community is get people off that freeway. The more jobs we have here, the less people are going to drive down below. Well, that's the pollution down there. But as far as our pollution here, up in on the 14 freeway, those cars are in this community and we're breathing that air. So we've got to get those cars off that freeway.
There's a, there's a sign up on the city website where you can sign up for specific notifications. I would also encourage you to sign up on, for the Lahotten Water Board. That's the regional water quality board. And the AV, AQMD, we have our local air quality. So that'll get you pretty much all the notices.
Okay. So it's a water board and?
Palmdale Water District is another.
Mayor.
County Water Service is another. These are water entities. But.
What about the air pollution?
On our city website, man, I would advise you to look at our planning commission. All new businesses that are making proposals, they meet once a month as well. And you can come to their meetings and you hear any new business.
Will it be on your website?
So, all on our website.
Okay. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you. All right. Who else would like to speak? Sir?
Good evening, council members. My name is Cory Brown and I want to do a service at Elmo Valley College. My name is Cory Brown, and I want to do a service at Elmo Valley College. The subject of teaching is dog barking prevention. With roughly $90 million owned in the United States, there is no structured education programs for dog owners when it comes to responsible ownership. There's quote, 4.7 million dog bites in the United States. That means you have a lot of workers' compensation, a lot of property managers don't want to allow dog owners to have certain breeds in their establishments. And this program is going to help solidify that problem by actually making responsible dog ownership education available in these communities for the first time in California history. The program that we're going to have at Elmo Valley College, it's not a doctrine program, it's a program to teach responsible dog ownership education. It's a program to help people keep their animals in their homes. It's a program to build trust between the community and government. I strongly, strongly suggest that people be given an opportunity to keep animals in their home. I believe this program is going to help them do that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Are you at the Lancaster or the Palmdale campus?
Right now, we're at the Lancaster campus. We will do classes in Palmdale for sure.
And since the classes are closed right now, but next semester is in January, correct?
No, actually, we can do, actually, we have actually a contract with the City of Lancaster to do classes right now for their employees, their building employees.
Okay.
So we've done the zoning department, we have park raiders coming up, and we have other classes coming after that.
But they're on the AV college website, if someone's interested?
Yes. It's at AV campus, we're at, we're under Corporate and Community Services.
Very good. Well, thank you. All right. Who else would like to speak?
Go ahead. Who do I get this to?
Yes, sir. If I could just have your name, please.
David Reche, Palmdale resident. This is from 40 years I've driven a truck. My hip is gone. I'm not politically correct, and I'll put you right now. And two wrongs will make a right. Because I went and put a set in my backyard to my, up to in the front. But unfortunately, not realizing, I had a wooden fence, so I put a wooden fence up. Now I'm being told I have to take it down and put a hazardous waste fence up. What I mean by hazardous waste? A final fence, a plastic fence. We're not allowed to use straws, plastic straws, because they're hazardous. And what I'm getting, I'm being, I'm being extorted out of money, $100 here, $150 there. Because I don't have the money now to put your hazardous waste fence up. I haven't had a tree in that yard for over 20 years. All of a sudden, somebody says, "I've got a tree." Waste of water now to, for me to plant it. I planted a tree, and I'm trying. But as you notice, I can't get down. Year ago, I lost my job because of, they put a thing in my chest. So I can't drive anymore. I can't work. It is going to be that much longer. Hey, what are you guys going to do? Put me in my house? I was born here in Palmdale. You tore down my hospital that I was born in. And Mr. Left, you probably know where I'm talking about.
Right there.
It was right there across the street from the fire station. It was a little two-bed, two-bed hospital, 60 and a half years ago. And I sure hate to see what Palmdale has come to today. I loved the way it was, but knowing that progress comes, but this being extorted, everything. And then, I'm given 20 days. He sent me the ticket and said I had 20 days from the date of the ticket. When I got the ticket, I had three days, but I had 20 days from the date of the ticket to put in a request for something I can't remember. From the date of the ticket, it was due on the 25th. I got all the paperwork from it, and the bill on the 21st, on a Friday. I think the 21st is a Friday. But it was on a Friday. So how many, what was it, the 23rd or the 24th? I can't remember. But that's, I'm sorry about the vision, that that's what this is. And it's all, but it's all over a feud with my neighbor, because my son lives in my house. Been there for four, almost five years. He's on parole. And all, and it's all, he used the parole office, he used the sheriff's office, he used the, now he's come to, and come over on this way. And I can't get anybody to realize what's going on.
Well, I tell you what we can do with that. We can look at it. I'd like to see, maybe we get his contact information.
This is good information, good.
That's my home address.
Okay.
And I think I put my cell phone down. I'm not sure.
273. I said, I got it.
27, is it 273? That's my home, but I'm normally babysitting my daughter, with my daughter, you know.
If you want to walk over here, I'll pick your cell phone.
Yeah, don't put it over the air.
What I can do while you're doing that is, we're going to look at this, maybe there's some income opportunities to help. That's what I would hope. I don't know what there is. Thank you, sir. All right. Who else?
Jason King. Just like the union showed up here to this meeting and got what they wanted, that's what we need to do for the board of supervisors that I've been asking you guys to do for so long. And I'd like to let them show leadership. He hasn't shown leadership. We need to go down there for the trauma tax and copay park funds, that we are not getting our fair share. And Phil, that board of supervisors, we need, ask the union people to go with us. Rent some buses, you go down there, and get our money back. Stop sitting complacent. Parallels on Highway from Four Points to the freeway, it's in such bad shape, I've never seen a road such bad shape. That's a regional road, and for that road to be like that, a regional road in the City of Palmdale, is terrible. Should have been first project from transportation, of county passing the transportation tax. Mailboxes were hit in your district. Why don't you offer rain cameras to the people that live across the street from those mailboxes throughout the city first? What the city is doing to the swap meet, I think is shameful. I think it's unbelievable. And I think the city attorney, I think the city attorney is a bully, power-hungry person who loves lawsuits, who makes a lot of money off the city. And he needs to be fired and replaced. He, there's plenty of attorneys out there. We can always find another one. It's time to have fresh air and a new city council, a new mayor, and a new city attorney. Their relationships, their relationships, there's always a lack of communication dialogue. I asked the Bruces, I said, "Did Perti ever go to the swap meet and walk property with the Bruces?" She said, "Never." Can you imagine that? Iconic property in the City of Palmdale, and the city manager doesn't go and meet the people and walk around the swap meet and look at things and just be friendly? It's crazy. Three years he's been here, he hasn't gone to the swap meet and walked with them? I want to make these points because they're important. The Bruces have spent over $1 million to appease the city and comply. On September 8, 2018, Judge Yef ordered the city to meet and confer with the Bruces to mediate the dispute. The Bruces attorney reached out to the city attorneys multiple times, asking and begging to meditate, or mitigate. Each time, the city attorney refused to meditate. If the city refuses to meditate, this case will cost taxpayers millions of unnecessary dollars that could be spent in better ways in our community. We all know the Bruces have attempted to comply, want to comply, and will comply. There is absolutely no reason for the cities to play hardball with the Bruces. The swap meet has operated safely and accident-free for 40 years. 40 years. Nothing. This is open one day a week. It's an entertainment thing. It's been going on for 40 years, and you're treating it like the AV ball. That's just unbelievable. And you guys should all be ashamed of yourselves. And this guy needs to be fired.
Thank you.
Cost $67 million. You need to be held accountable.
Who else would like to speak?
Tim Cummings, Palmdale resident. I feel your pain, man. I got to say, I just don't see it happening in Palmdale a whole lot. I was actually run out of my previous city by code enforcement, who were running a little private enterprise. And when confronted by the fact that they were running a little private enterprise, it was very hard to really confront them. Because in their business time, they were running a little private enterprise, swore the mayor and city council would that down. And it's hard to confront a guy who's using his position in code enforcement to make people sell him cars, when the city is using him to affect property values. That's extortion. Your fence problem, I feel it.
Sir, you need to address us, please.
This city, I, is very well-run, and that's why I'm here. I think it's been real well-run for a long time. Mr. Rothbauer's been on the council for longer than I've been, Paul. It's glad I've been here longer than I've been, Paul. In order to keep us safe from outside influences, I proposed to various individual council members over the past year, that we need to look at the revenue-sharing agreement authority that the city council has. Because we are in a county with the largest county government bureaucracy in the nation. We're in a valley with a city whose city government is extremely interested in us. And they are the ones who pushed that revenue-sharing authority into the hands of the city council 20 years ago. And if you don't think they were thinking 20 years ahead, you don't know it. So I made this proposal. I made it to Mr. Left, I made it to Mr. Rothbauer, I made it to Mr. Creo. Other people who I know in other districts, I believe, have presented it as well. If not, I apologize, I'm just at war. It's vicious. But on that order, what I wrote was a proposal, a suggestion, an idea, a framework, and a reasoning. What I'd like to see is that proposal put into the hands of the city attorney, who I personally don't think should be fired. And have him look at what it would take to move that authority back exclusively into the hands of the citizens.
The voters.
The voters. Not because I don't trust you, John, and, man, but because the city council changes. Who will be on the city council next year? Who will be on the city council five years from now? Who will be on the city council when my children are standing here? I don't. I propose it now, you know?
Right.
That authority is a risk to the city. I propose that we put that back into the hands of the citizens.
Thank you for your time. Actually, Mr. Dacey does have that proposal, and so it is being looked at, or just getting reviewed. But I would also follow up. I think your eyes are slightly on the line. Any revenue sharing should go to voters. All right. Who else wants to speak? We're all done? That draws usually one or two. Yes, sir.
Phil Danny, I live in Palmdale. As a citizen here, I just want to say I'm happy with this council and what you're doing. So I'm going to disagree with some others, but I love this council, what you're doing, and I love Palmdale and the progression that I've seen. With the exception of one thing that I always talk about, illegal fireworks. And I have done some work, roadwork, footwork. I've been to some assembly, council meetings, assemblymen's offices, congressmen's offices, and not too much happened from that. However, I did get the most important thing. I got an email from, how do I pronounce her name? Terry Isaz.
Isaz, yes.
Executive Assistant. And I posed a question to her, and I got the answer. And so Mayor Jim, this may be directed to you, since you're the big kahuna here. I asked the question, "How many years has the city allowed safe and sane fireworks?" Oops. I don't believe they're safe, don't believe they're sane. The answer was ordinance number 20, adopted by council on November 16, 1962. Section 3, that safe and sane fireworks may be sold and discharged within the City of Palmdale, and that no fireworks classified as dangerous fireworks shall be sold or offered for sale in the City of Palmdale. If you figure that out, it goes back 56 years. And if you think about it, think about all the letters to the editor, all the moaning, the groaning, the whining, and the complaining from citizens about what these illegal fireworks do. So now, Mayor Jim, you have, and your colleagues here, a chance to make, well, maybe make history, and make a whole lot of people happy in the thing, in the process. So then, my question to you, Mayor Jim, is, is it as simple, for example, next month's meeting, can you put an agenda item on there to get rid of fireworks, the illegal fireworks that have been there 56 years? Can you put that on next month's agenda, vote on it, and terminate the illegal fireworks?
To answer your question, I think it's going to require a vote of the people. Because it's been a vote of the people that enacted it. It was in corporation issues, why we incorporated as a city. So that's why it was done in 1962. But since that time, we put it on the ballot, I'll just guess, 15-plus years ago, the voters reinforced that as something they wanted. So I don't know how we could, as a council, eliminate safe and sane fireworks. We would not eliminate the illegal fireworks that we see every Fourth of July that is all over our city. And that's where we can use the help of our state and federal officials. Because those fireworks are coming from somewhere, and it's a very porous border, we're not checking cars, or, anyway, we need their help if we're going to eliminate the most dangerous of those fireworks. But the answer to your question, we can put it on the ballot. That would be the extent of our power. Now, we could get our city attorney to research that and come back with the options, but I believe that's what the options are. So the best we may be able for is to get a ballot, maybe the next time we vote, and let the community weigh in again.
I think it was a, wasn't, didn't we have that research once before, though?
Yeah.
It was a voter initiative, and it was passed by voter initiative, and for it to come back off again, it has to be a voter initiative.
But you can start.
Well, we can start. We have, as a council, we put it on the ballot.
No, I think, I think the research was, is that it has to be a voter initiative because...
That what the voter puts in, the voter has to take out.
Yeah. The voter has to, the process to initiate that process to...
Well, tell me what we can do. Why don't we get our city attorney to come back to us with information on those options?
Let's get rid of your illegal fireworks, though.
It will not get rid of the illegal fireworks.
But it's a start.
Maybe. Maybe?
It's a start.
Okay. Fair enough?
Yeah. Do that. It's a start.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Who else would like to speak? Are we all done? All right. We're going to move on. Let's go back to our city council agenda. We have some informational reports on what we've done at city expense. Who wants to go first?
I'll go. Lots of good stuff going on. Really active month for a lot of us here on the council. I'll jump right into it. I attended the multi-cultural festival that was right here in Palm Square. Really good turnout, really good to see all the different types of people we have in this community come together and celebrate together. As long as we have our whole entire council there, and really well-tended, well-received, and definitely, it was good to have it this year in the city of Palmdale. I also attended the 9/11 Remembrance Ceremony at the mall. Also well-attended. We had a flyby from local agencies, and we had to pay respects to all the people on 9/11 and all the firsters, longers that, from above and beyond the call of duty on that day. I also attended the Fallen Heroes Memorial Ride. That started at Harley in Lancaster, and we drove to the mall, and then they had their ride from there. As part of the Sheriff Boosters Group, we raised money for the deputies in this valley. I think we had, I think it was about 300 riders that day. So that was a great turnout. I also attended the Desert Haven Baja Bash, which was a fundraiser for Desert Haven. I attended the NCTC meeting. That took place in Santa Creta this time. I believe that was our second meeting since becoming a JPA with the City of Lancaster and the City of Santa Creta. We had updates for various transportation projects that are going on, as far as Caltrans, 14 freeway, the rail, metro, and various agencies. One of the things I advocated for when we were there is to get going on 14 freeway on the bottleneck project. I made it very vocal, had me along years. And one of our top priorities right now should be expanding, or widening, some of the lanes on the 14 freeway that caused the bottleneck to and from the way to work during the rush of graphics.
The study's underway.
The study is underway. And that's going to be important, because as this community, as the city keeps growing, it's only going to get worse, and there's only going to be more people commuting. I think right now, we're at around 70,000 commuters a day, almost 80, around every day. So that's something that we're advocating, advocating for big time at the NCTC, as long as, as well as the rail and double-track road and trail. I attended the AV, QMD, Air Ballot Order. City of Palmdale received an order for the streetlight project. That was, that's a big one for us. All 18,000 streetlights are currently in the process of being converted to LED lights. I'm sure a lot of you out there have seen it. Quite noticeable between an orange light and a cool white light. That is currently underway. I don't know when the final timeline is, but I think we've got probably about a little more than half, or probably about halfway done. That's probably going to be going through the rest of the, this year and next year, while doing these things out. I attended the... I attended the congressional debate that took place right here in the Tamale Center. That was a packed house. Had a big, big turnout for that one. And it was good to see the two candidates that are running for Congress this year. Have a good, good, clean educational debate that lets the citizens, the voters know where each candidate stands. And I was happy to be there and talk to a lot of constituents during that time. I attended Grace Fest over at the theater. That was packed, that was huge. Saturday night, it was almost standing where it normally. And that event just gets bigger and bigger every year. I also met with some developers, specifically in my district and my area of Anne Verde. They're currently still working to get shopping market in and more homes developed on that side of town. That seems to be where the developers are thirsty to get some shovels in the ground, get some stuff moving. So I'm constantly touching base with those guys and seeing what we can do as a city to make sure that we're accommodating them and that we're trying to get houses built. Our housing growth right now is, housing is one of the problems that our community faces. We're definitely at a shortage, and we need to do what we can as a city to make sure we get more rooftops. I attended the recycle water meeting, which I chair. We have an insurance policy now. That's one of the items we have for business at the last meeting. And we're also, one of the projects that's part of that board is the recharge project. That kind of ties into it, but yeah, we're moving forward on, on doing what we can to get recycled water out to parks and other various city facilities. And then, just yesterday, I attended the golf tournament at the country club over in Palmdale. I think we had over 100 golfers and then some Sheriff Boosters, you know, raising more money for the sheriffs or for our deputies out there that need additional equipment, tasers, vests, and rubber bean guns, all sorts of, all sorts of stuff that gives the duckies and the officers out there another option of, of defense that's non-lethal. And it helps, it's good for everyone when the officers have the extra equipment they need to make the city a safer place. So that was my one. There's always more of that with my other council members, so I'll ask. Thanks, guys.
Very good.
Thanks. I wish the county would step up a little more for that stuff. Yeah, well, that's why, that's why we're there. So some of these are duplicates. I'll try not to be redundant. This past month, I attended the mayor's metro roundtable meeting down at the L U Union Station. There, we kind of went over a lot of the regional transportation issues. And from, from a larger perspective, looking at things coming down the pipe, things that LA's looking at, projects, how they're gonna impact us, funding issues that are gonna impact or not impact us. Liability trust fund board, the, just looking to continue to maintain steady rates, keep a lid on the liability costs through the sheriff's department. We had a couple of cannabis committee meetings, that's ongoing. A lot of good information coming out. And the committee members, I think, are appreciating the good background material. Attended the SCAG Regional Council and Transportation Committees. Their agendas are all up online. Again, looking at the biggest issues coming up as we're preparing for the next RENA process. We need to be cognizant of that, and that will be a critical role for our representatives as we look at affordable housing numbers, and making sure we maintain a manageable number of affordable housing numbers, and not an excess number we experienced in the past. Joined a number of our council members at the multicultural festival this year over Palm Square. I also joined Mr. Bishop at the Fallen Heroes Ride. Again, it's always very well attended, and the, the line stretches several ramps as you start coming down the, coming down the road with all the riders on that thing. The 9/11 ceremony is another one of those that you wish you didn't have to have. And since the, you know, one of the big topics they, they discuss at the 9/11 ceremony is all the folks that were lost in the initial 9/11 attack. What they did kind of bring up this time was, is an ongoing loss that goes on from the people that were impacted by that, and from the, from all first responders and crews that went out and worked on that pile. My own brother was out there, worked on that pile, and was recently diagnosed with cancer. And it's a particular type, is very identifiable to the, to the materials and the, they call it the focus group of people that worked on that pile. With the city manager, attended League of Contract Cities meetings in Long Beach. The, we received the Beacon Award for energy savings, kind of tied in with the AQMD award, but also a little further. A lot of folks don't realize all the energy saving things that are going on within city hall, on city projects, in our parks, and all of that. And that got recognized, and it's, it's actually fairly prestigious to be recognized at a statewide level, and to be recognized by your other cities for kind of setting a standard out there. The other topics that we had a lot of discussion on was Prop 6, which is coming up. A lot of discussion on other communities' experiences ongoing with cannabis issues. Homeless issues was another large topic, as was state housing. And the plethora of bills that the state, in their infinite wisdom, felt that they needed to pass because cities can't possibly know what to do, can we? Couple of really good car shows. I gotta tell you something. If you happen to be a classic or a custom car guy, if you have anything from the 30s all the way up through some of the cool cars of the 60s to the 70s. We had two car shows that were outstanding, the Vets for Vespers here in Palm Square. It was, had a lot of community groups here. They raised a lot of funds for their ongoing veterans groups, and we partnered with them on that. And it was a huge event out at 47 ANS with the True Memories Car Club. And they do a lot of local community fundraising out there, too. That thing was so massive, had so many guys show up, and they had to take over half of the Home Depot lot as well. Home Depot was very accommodating for them on that. So that was, that was unbelievable, I couldn't, and they had a lot of, if you guys ever watched that Repo Show, those guys were out there. They had a bunch of celebrities and stuff, it was really an outstanding event. And it was great to participate in that. The Tamale Festival was held this year, and so you guys all know about it. One of the benefactors of that is the Amigos de la Feria. And they're working on setting up a Latino cultural center up at the fairgrounds, and that's one of the fundraisers, they're working on, on that. With my colleagues, I attended the NCTC. We adopted, in addition to that, we adopted a conflict of interest code. We had a lot of discussion on the infra, funding grants. Matter of fact, we just saw some stuff on the news for the groundbreaking. It was just, it's the bottleneck program down at the 5 and 14, bottleneck down there. So that will help. AQMD, again, if you got a business, you need some money, and we can replace your old dirty engines. That's one of the big things we're doing there, is helping get rid of that, those old junky cars and stuff like that. There is a car turning program, too, so any guys who are clunkers can turn them in and get some money for them, too. They have to be registered, they have to be running. California JPA IA, in my role on the Liability Trust Fund Board, one of the things they do is they send us to some risk management training in how cities and our law enforcement deal with things like, again, tends to be a common topic here, homeless issues, cannabis control issues, and things like that. Very interesting, also on cycle, that's gonna, as far as you're talking about, like with air, that's gonna take a lot of cars off the road. A lot of legislative committee updates, I'm on a couple legislative committees, we had some updates on that as well. So if y'all take a look at your calendars, on October 3rd, at 8 o'clock in the morning, you need to crash the city's computers, because that's when the Ring system applications will start being accepted. We're gonna have, Mr. Murphy, how many, 1,000?
1,000.
So why don't you give the details on this, and then else...
So tomorrow at 8:00 AM, on our website, the Ring initiative that was fashioned by this council will start. It will be for 125 systems for each of the four districts. And then, the next 500 systems will be the first come, first served. For the first 30 days in each district, people can go on our website, follow the link to thering.com, and you'll get a code. But getting that code does not necessarily mean you get the system. You have to follow up with Ring and...
You have to follow instructions?
Follow the instructions, because Ring will give out probably twice the amount of codes. This is how they did it in Santa Clarita also. What we don't want to happen is people to lock up those codes and then never follow through. So we want this initiative, and it would be great if all thousand went. And, you know, so we want people to have the time, but we also want them to sign off as soon as possible so that we can start building this network across the city. We are gonna track the data, and while our crime stats are continuing to go down, we want, you know, target the burglaries, and hopefully this will help that number go down.
This also requires a $30 a year subscription to have your videos available. I've been a member of this for several years. You can archive it all, so it's always there to pull up if you need it. And it also has an application for called Neighborhood. Now, that's where your neighbors and you talk amongst the Ring community. So it's, it's got some good benefits for us, and that's certainly why the council have supported this. And again, looks like we have a fair system for the whole city to be able to take advantage.
I want to thank the staff for their assistance on making sure that we get these things out quickly, spread out, too. And that was really important. I know that Ms. Beddicourt was one to make sure that, that we got them spread out. Santa Clarita sold out three days.
Is this free?
It gives you a discount on the units, and there's about half a dozen different styles that you could get. If you go on, again, if you go on there, take a look, take a look tonight. Doorbells, spotlights, and different things, it's on, it's in the news.
It's a $100 discount.
Yeah. And so depending on what unit you get, the discount can be, you know, fairly substantial. And when a neighborhood was experiencing a lot of problems in LA, 41% of the people responded in that neighborhood, and they had a 55% reduction in residential burglaries in that neighborhood. So these things work, so...
Cameras are a huge turn for crime.
So a lot of people will turn around and go away, and the ones that don't, you got them on camera.
Well, you could even do better, you could speed through this device.
Chase them away, get on the side.
That you could say.
Scare your dog, so...
All right, who's next?
That would be me. I did attend some of the meetings already mentioned by Councilmember Richard and Hope Power. And those were the FCTC, the AVTA, Brown's Cycle Water Board, the Inter-Multicultural Event here on Palm Square. I also attended the sister meeting with the city of Palmdale and Palm Square, which I was impressed with that event, because it's been what, 40 years now that the program's been in existence? And the neat thing about that is that I got to talk to people that are from my dad's hometown, New York. My dad was born out of Tunico, which is about 30 kilometers from Palm Square. So it was exciting that we could talk to them. First time I participate in such an event. The afternoon, this time Palm Square came to Palmdale last year. The delegation from Palmdale went to Palm Square. And really looking forward to being part of this, this group. Another meeting that I had was with Supervisor Carter. We talked about copay and measuring money. Couple of staff members went with me, and then with their last Thursday, I believe. We talked about what discretionary funds are available, what the process is, and we provided them with a list of small projects and large projects. And we're hopeful that we'll be able to get some of that money to come to Palmdale. Very competitive application process, we were told. But thanks to those meetings, we've been able to get money. Because we actually met with the supervisor about a year ago, and we were able to get $160,000. Some of that money is gonna be put on Yellen Park. All state structures are gonna be ready pretty soon. And another couple of things on other parts, like playground equipment and some ADA improvements. So we've been talking to the supervisor to make sure that we get, without a pressure, some amount of money coming to our residents. Another thing that I did, I went to the MetroLink meeting a couple of weeks ago. It was very interesting, another programs. One thing that I learned also is that MetroLink, because of the fatalities and accidents that happen often, unfortunately, they're actually looking at having their own coroner's department. What that would do is that in case of a fatality, MetroLink will be able to go through the internal process to be able to keep the rail lines and the troops going in a more timely manner. The reason being that whenever there is a fatality, wherever it happens, whichever county, the county coroners have to come and take a report. Then there's other agencies that actually have to go through that process, meaning that it delays opening those nights again. So unfortunately, because of the number of fatalities that happen during their passenger trains, they're looking at actually having their own coroner department or assistance so that things can come back to normal, or accidents with fatalities having involved. In a nutshell, those sort of things that I did. Again, I really enjoyed being part of the Palm Square City Service Program.
Thanks.
I attended the multicultural festival, and I want to give a shout out to Robert Alvarado and to Elena Montgomery for putting that together themselves. There's a lot of effort that they did, and they brought a really good event to our community. I did have a meeting with Neighborhood Services, where we met with some people from Neighborhood Services and Code Enforcement, talked about some crime reduction efforts for our city. Came up with some good ideas, and some team building, so that was very nice.
Laura, can you put the microphone?
Sure.
Here we go. I attended the cannabis meeting, where's, I think, our second or third one? We have seven more to go. And we are going through the educational process right now, so that everybody that's on the committee is understanding the difference between cannabis and him, and all the state regulations that are constantly changing. So we're going with a very diligent and thorough process. And as our public meetings, I hope that we have more turnout, because right now, the majority of people that are there are the people that own the pot shops. So I would like to see some of the general public actually attend, so we can get more input from other sides of the issue. So please remember that those are public. And I think that's all that I have. I'm very, I'm busy, I was busy at work, but I did do a lot of good in the city, so I apologize for that.
Mr. Mayor, before you do your report, there's something that I forgot to mention, the MetroLink meeting that I attended, something that I think is really important. There is $500 million available to improve MetroLink services. From what I understood in talking to the CEO, I forget her name. But Metro is the one that will be deciding how that money is allocated and for what specific programs to improve MetroLink. So I think it's important for us to continue to attend those meetings. Something that I have gone and doing, to make sure that we get our fair share of those $500 million.
Just so you know, that that's already been allocated to Alameda Marquardt over across.
Well, that's, that was not told to me.
Funny how they didn't do that, huh?
Yeah. Well, that takes away my thunder.
I'm not opposed to the bus issue, getting us on a bus and going down and manning things. I'm okay with that, so let me know if you get on that bus.
Well, hang on, the jury's still out. That's what I talked earlier, we have a billion dollars worth of transportation for the Antelope Valley, that's part of it, is this 500. And they, they are doing the studies on us, so the money hasn't been allocated yet, but we do need to pay attention. I did, went to a Palmdale Chamber Business Visit, we walked the Trader Joe's Center, we go door to door, we meet with every business, ask them how it's going. We've been doing this for probably the last three, four years, we've probably walked the city twice now, at least sometimes in some areas, three times, to have a direct contact with our business community. It's been very effective and it's a partnership with the Chamber of Commerce and of course, our captain here from the Shares Department. I also did a State of the City at the Palmdale Chamber Business Breakfast, Jim Perti and myself showed up and did our myth busting. It's been well received. We also did a, had a meeting there, I'm not going to get into that, International Multicultural Festival, again, it's back, hasn't been in Palmdale for a few years, it's back, so it's a good thing.
It's every other year.
Pardon?
It's in Palmdale every other year. I perform there.
I understand.
So I know that.
I understand. But it hadn't been here for a couple of years, so we're back on track. I also met with, we had a 25th year anniversary with this group, it's really a hula dancing group, but they support veterans, Pearl Harbor veterans, and they've been very effective in the community, they were part of the veterans' parades, and they were very veteran centric and very patriotic. Also had an opportunity to go to the 9/11 Remembrance, it was very good. I also had a meeting again with Sister City on the visitation pending at that time, but it turned out the get together was great, it was a great turnout. Also had the Palmdale Chamber, I did a State of the City there luncheon as well, did a breakfast and a luncheon, I think we covered most of the Palmdale Chamber.
I think I was at that one too, wasn't I?
Yeah, lunch. Also, we had a High Speed Rail Community Open House that was in Lancaster, but I went up there to see what the pulse was. Well attended, very supportive, probably over 100, probably 20 people there, it was a good meeting. Also, we did a, went for the Joint Power Authority, which is really the High Desert Corridor. Ladies and gentlemen, we're planning this corridor to connect Victorville and Palmdale and out of that, we're looking at things like right-of-way acquisition for the Express West train, which just announced purchased by Brightline. Brightline is committed to the $7 billion program to bring high-speed rail from Las Vegas to Victorville and the Joint Powers Authority is now going to bring it from Victorville to Palmdale. This will be a private sector project for the most part, but what it does, it gives us a portal to the rest of the United States, because it will not stop in Las Vegas, it's going to be connecting to other major cities, other metropolitan areas of the United States. So we've become really the state portal for interstate high-speed rail by this private sector investment. $7 billion, ladies and gentlemen, this is serious and the people that were here tonight are going to be building it. So it's all good news for us. So the joint power is very important and out of that, we hope to be able to acquire, we have $270 million that's been assigned to right-of-way acquisition for the High Desert Corridor. And so what we need to do is make sure that money is utilized to help bring the train to Palmdale, or right-of-way. Ma'am, this isn't a question and answer, but you know about it, right?
I know. I'm all for the high speed, I traveled one end of Japan to the other and if anybody ever does, rides one of those, they will want it here.
Well, guess what, Europe is fully filled up with those, so is Far East China, they are better able to compete now on the world market because they can move people and goods quicker than America can. So we need to get on board and we are, we have a very comprehensive plan for the Antelope Valley. We just have to make sure we realize that plan in the Antelope Valley. Also had an opportunity to speak to a realtors group at the Rancho Vista Golf Course, did a little mini State of the City there as well, very well attended and very interested in the opportunities that are coming to our city. Attended Hispanic Chamber Luncheon, try to make all those if I possibly can, same with the Palmdale Chamber, same with the African American Chamber. Had an opportunity to go to a little art exhibit at the Boulders by the lake, which is kind of a cool deal, this is Rita Tapia, who we worked together 30 years ago, she reemerged and she had her own little art exhibit. So some of the artists that are being promoted in our city, it's translating in little events throughout our city, so it's kind of nice to see that. Of course, the Veterans Car Show, which was fabulous. Also went to the NCTC meeting, this is North County Transportation Coalition, I actually went because two items on the agenda got my attention. They want to introduce, reintroduce things like the Joint Power Authority, things like high-speed rail, which is fine, it's all part of the discussion. But what's interesting, they also have an item on there to take a position, which means this newly formed JPA can turn around and say, we're not interested in what you've done in Palmdale for the last 20 years and having any high-speed systems about to connect to our city. No, we might consider doing something different. And what I sense that that means is they see that 270 million for right-of-way acquisition for High Desert Corridor as a piggy bank that we can now use for whatever project we decide. And I think that's very dangerous, so we're going to be monitoring the NCTC very closely now for that reason, because it really disregards the work we've done for 20 years that has produced a high-speed system, that has got a right-of-way for a connector to Victorville and Palmdale, also supports high-speed rail statewide with station in our downtown. We've got an awful lot of work in this area and quite frankly, it's too important to let a new org along and say, ah, we think we're going to do something different. I don't think the process should move that quickly and I think we as citizens need to be monitoring what's going on in that group because it is a different group now. And again, I want to make sure they stay to the agenda that we've invested our time and energy on. Also, I got an opportunity to meet with some nonprofits, I went to an AB Ballet season preview and we got some good ballet here and anyway, they're showing the world that the Antelope Valley is part of ballet. Again, Chamber Luncheon, which I talked about, but that was something lacking, spoke, I got an opportunity to say goodbye to Vince's Pizza and Pasta, they are moving on, they're retiring, it's a great couple, highly involved in the community, doing great things and we need to say something nice to them because I think they have contributed heavily without any thanks, official thanks coming out of the city, we owe them something. So I'd like to maybe look at our next agenda for that. Also got an opportunity to go to Grace Fest, I went to Friday night though, I couldn't go Saturday. Anyway, well attended, good event and they are, they are doing well at the amphitheater, they're kind of showing the example of what a nonprofit can do on their own and I think that's exciting. Also, Sister City Reception, we talked about that, I wasn't able to do much beyond the first night, Councilman Creo and I were there for that, it was good. American Classic Christmas Luncheon, we're doing some outreach in the community to support the American Classic Christmas, we do for free, we're going into our fourth year, so we're looking for community support, financial support and participation. So we've got some good things coming out of that group and this was basically a Realtor based group that we pitched to, asked them to consider doing some investment in that program because we think it's an important one because it's free to the public, there's no expectation other than show up and have a good time. And so those are the type of events that are, I think, something we need to encourage. Also got to speak to, did another State of the City for Keller Williams back at the Rancho Vista, packed place, probably 200 plus people, all highly interested in what's going on in our city and the transportation is a particular note for them. Very excited about the train from Las Vegas and what that means now to our, all our future planning. So again, to a California High Speed Rail Open here, Open House here in Palmdale, again, well attended, probably over 100 people and again, very pro-rail. Also went to the Hispanic Chamber that night, got a margarita, got in time just for a margarita because the night was over, but they had a nice reception in their office and showing their gratitude, I think, to their members. Other than that, I think I went to the Hispanic Lunch, Chamber Luncheon today, that was great and that is my report.
Ma'am, I forgot to mention that I was at the cancer walk and I also attended the Pompidou Playhouse's murder mystery theater. And it was my first murder mystery event and that was a lot of fun, so if you guys haven't done it, I had the best time ever.
Good.
Thanks, Senator Constance Towne, you guys can go.
You're over at the amphitheater? I missed you.
I wasn't walking enough, I was just visiting.
Oh, okay.
All right, so that's information. Item 13 is our city council request for any new agenda items. Anybody wish to discuss possible agenda items, issues we'd like our staff to research maybe and get back to us on information?
We don't want to overlook JG.
Well, we already have the fireworks thing to be researched, right?
Yes. A couple of things. The auto, the auto dealers, I know we approved some improvements around the Auto Mall at our last council meeting, but upon talking to the auto dealers, I think they're still looking for some more improvements around the Auto Mall. I'd like to see what we can do as far as setting aside a separate counter or some of the tax revenue that they generate to be reinvested back into our Auto Mall. They're one of the largest tax revenue, they bring a lot of sales tax to our city and I think we need to continue to reinvest into our Auto Mall because it's a vital part of our city and we still want to attract new auto dealers to that area and there's still a lot of auto dealers that, that haven't come to town yet. So I think we need to take a look at kind of taking care of that area, especially while we're on the upswing right now.
I agree and I think at one time, we had a funding mechanism to do some of those improvements. As a city, we pulled back for whatever reason, I think we need to come back and look to make that investment. I agree with you, those are.
I think also, one of the issues that occurred over there was their, they had, they had their own internal program, I know they're working on making some adjustments on that and their LMD over there, Landscape Maintenance District, was, I don't think it adequately addressed the area around and internally there, so that may need to be revisited as well. It's got to be a better solution because it really looks tired and needs.
It's just poor presentation if we're not playing, participating together. It's too important to let it go, so I'm, I'm looking for more from the city besides the plan. I'd like to see a financial contribution as well.
Yeah, Mr. Grillo mentioned something last night as well about some of the LEDs to the planners and stuff like that. Didn't you, didn't you, Grillo? Yeah? Didn't you mention something on making improvements to the Auto Mall?
Yes, and I think that we did our work to the city, allowing them to display their cars around us. I remember seeing some of that in order to help them display their cars more efficiently. But I agree, we need to support that, that training. I think the LMD will certainly help the area in being more flexible with their sales. I know that we removed the special advancement for our sales, sadly, that was part of the negotiations, because we had a workshop within like a year and a half ago. And I think that was well attended and, you know, we'll be very supportive on helping them be more successful.
We've done a lot of the changes for all that, so the relationship will be better.
So what are you wanting to put on the agenda for next time? I missed the actual topic.
Well, I think what we're talking about is where's the financing side and what are we as a city contributing to make that happen in partnership?
Can we just get some follow-up on that? I think that's probably easiest.
You can add follow-up, but I also want to point out that we are trying to be a good partner, we obviously just started construction, I think, this week on, on that project that you guys approved last month.
Right.
But also, in our partnership with Lamar Advertising, we get some of the billboard space. This month, we're dedicating the billboards to the Auto Mall in partnership to help them promote what they're doing. So there are a lot of things we can do, I will follow with Jim when he gets back on how we can look at Phase Two, either Chuck's team, they looked at it, we built off on Phase One for this project. So what I'm hearing clearly is how quick can we go get Phase Two?
Well, what time we had about one and a half million, we were looking to invest over there to help with that project. So I'd, I'd like us to revisit something beyond a billboard, which is great, appreciate that, but I think for us to get the facelift that we're looking for, I think the city needs to participate in a greater level. So I'm not asking for an agenda item for this, but I do want to bring, bring some information back so we can look for options. What else?
I do have a couple of things I wanted to mention, since we were encouraged to ask for agenda items. Last month, I mentioned how desert camping is something that we need to pay attention to. And last month, I mentioned that I called staff to remove a couple of mattresses on 6050 South on the Boulevard in Monlaven US and they were removed. Well, they're back, not the same mattresses, different mattress, but because we are doing the street light change program with the LEDs and this is something that was discussed also with me and I have Salva. Those street lights have the capability of putting cameras on them. So for instance, those locations, 6050 South on the Boulevard in Monlaven US and that's not a good idea, those seem to be the period offenses, people dumping mattresses there. So maybe if we could look at what the process would be to put security cameras at specific locations where these things keep happening, we would be successful in finding out these room there, because that would give us a chance to take pictures, maybe zoom in into the vehicles license plates or things like that and know that these street lights have that capability with the pins that are there. So if staff could look at what the process would be and the cost, obviously, placing cameras at specific locations, I'm sure that would serve as a deterrent for people to keep doing that.
If we could. There was, we talked also about illegal dumping and we wanted to focus on that.
I think we got a workshop coming up.
We got a workshop.
Yeah, so I don't think that we talked about putting cameras, but that would be something that.
All part of the package, I think.
All part of the discussion.
Okay. Okay, well, that's my question.
Good.
Just one more quick thing, not so much as an agenda item, but more so as a statement. This has been a rather controversial item, but it's regarding the swap meet. I think, I think there's been a lot of discussion around this, but I think, I think we need to take a look at what we're doing with the swap meet, they've been around our city for a long time, there's a lot of people that go there, there's a lot of people that sell there. I think we definitely need to evaluate whatever comes of it, what we can do to help that situation and make sure that we can show the residents in the city that we are business friendly and that we don't have bad intentions.
All right. Anything else?
Well, I just want to hope that we can close this meeting and do remembrance of the people that were killed in Las Vegas, it's the one-year anniversary for that and let's pray that we never have to experience a tragedy like that in our city.
Good point. All right, with that, we will adjourn in their honor. We'll adjourn the city council, our successor agency and the Palmdale Financial Authority. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, have a good night.